Good morning and welcome to the March 15th meeting of the City of Lakeland Planning and Zoning Board. The Board meets every third Tuesday of the month to review proposals for changing the city's comprehensive plan, its future land use map, zoning changes consistent with the map, and conditional use permits. The Board is made up of seven members appointed by the City Commission and is assisted by the staff of the Community and Economic Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Staff will advance any presentation slides that should have been provided prior to the meeting. The meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is a public hearing where we expect to hear new applicants explain their request and receive comments from affected parties. The second part of the meeting is termed the general meeting and primarily consists of acting on recommendations from staff about cases that came up in the prior month's meeting. We invite everyone who wishes to participate to be heard. We do ask that you be concise in your comments and that speakers avoid being repetitive. That is, if several people have pointed out traffic concerns, there is no need to hear additional comments regarding traffic again, but we would like to hear anything that is new that has not been discussed. In order to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and the clerk has a time limit for this purpose. We respectfully ask that you adhere to this rule. We also ask at this time that you silence all mobile devices. Also, if you do come up to speak, please give your name and address before beginning your address. Thank you.
Good morning again. Item one, major modification of planned unit development, zoning to allow a 102,675-square-foot mini warehouse self-storage facility with indoor RV storage on property located at 2575 Harden Boulevard. Owner, New Heritage LLC, applicant Matthew Johnson, JSK Consulting. And note, application we noticed to revise stated square footage, and this is for consideration of final decision.
Hello, good morning for the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. This major modification was reviewed and approved by the Board last month. However, shortly after the meeting, it was determined by the applicant that the proposed major modification request should have been to allow for 102,675-square-foot mini warehouse and self-storage facility, which will also include an outdoor RV storage area as it did last month on the subject property and not a 70,000-square-foot structure as that represented the net square footage, but not the gross, which is again 102,000 square foot 675, I'm sorry, 102,675,000 square foot. So again, just briefly, we'll go over the site visit slides. This is looking north along Harden Boulevard. This is looking west over the site. And this is looking south along Harden Boulevard. Again, looking west towards Muirfield Village. And this is looking west towards Beacon Terrace Little Home Community. Again, looking towards Beacon Terrace. And looking towards Muirfield. Again, towards Muirfield. This is towards Assisted Living Facility, Azalea Park. And this is the revised site plan. Nothing else has changed with this application, and staff is still recommending approval of the proposed major modification request to this PUD. Because of this adjustment to the request, it should be noted that letters of notification were mailed to 150 property owners within 500 feet of the property, and as a result, we did receive one phone call, one letter, and two emails in opposition to this major mod request, primarily due to concerns over incompatibility, noise, fumes, increased traffic, and the height of the proposed building. Finally, we again are recommending approval of this request as we did last month, but this is also a public hearing due to the change of the square footage in this request. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant for their presentation and then the public, should anyone wish to speak on the matter.
My name is Nicole Blashan, 444 Skokie Boulevard in Willmett, Illinois, 60091. As, just wanted to state, everything that was submitted in the last couple of months, nothing changed, the same footprint of the building, same height. We reached out again to the HOA, Muirfield Village, to let them know that, and the last meeting when it was approved, we noticed that the square footage in the PUD that was approved was just, just had 70,000 square feet, didn't say gross or net. So we just wanted to, we reached out to staff and wanted to make sure that we let them know about it. It's either if it's a connotation of 70,000 net or we put the whole gross square footage. So I did speak with Tanya Gibson, who she represents the Muirfield Village, informed her that nothing happened, she did, we went through that, she still said that they're in support. So, nothing really different from last time.
Any questions from the Board? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jill Manca, and I'm a resident at 610 Grasslands Village Circle. Been a resident there for 15 years and am very aware of the master plan that Drummond set forth for this community. And it is my understanding that this is a opposite position to where the master plan sits for the community. It's my understanding that this was to be a residentially built upon zone and to switch it over. I know that there is allowance for commercial development, but in seeing what's happening throughout Lakeland with the entire infrastructure, it's all distribution centers and storage units, and this is a community that has really prided itself on being an iconic area for Lakeland. And to add this element to that area, not only is in opposition of the residential master plan set forth by Drummond, but number two, it is a detriment to the overall aesthetic of that area. And most storage areas do not always welcome the best of clientele, regardless of how high-end they portray themselves to be. The third thing I have is the emergency access gate. I'd like to know more about that because with that gate being access to an existing roadway that our master association is responsible for, if the emergencies are more than just emergencies, we are on the hook for paying for that through the master association, and that's a huge element if they are using that for anything other than an emergency. The wear and tear during construction and during other elements of this process with the residents being in and out all the time, eventually those roadways are going to suffer, and that's something that all of us that live there are on the hook for, not, you know, the property manager. So, you know, big picture is that I'm opposed to this as a resident of 15 years of that area, and there's better things that we can do with this parcel of land that are already, we have a prime residential real estate, so why not have something residential go in there as part of our master plan? That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Hi, as I, we discussed last time, the facade of the building will match Azalea Park and everything else around it. We want to be good neighbors. We did reach out to the Graceland HOA as well, and we showed renderings of proposed building, and there was no negative feedback from the HOA other than please reach out to the Muirfield, you know, HOA, they're actually closer to our development. Our facility, I know, mentioned, is all climate control, indoor loading, there's nothing to see from the outside. You drive through the facility and you come out when you're ready. In regards to the emergency road, we don't want to use it. We don't want to use it during construction. As my understanding, we're already part of the HOA, so we're paying a fee as part of only this land. So we agreed and spoke with both HOAs that we have no intention to use that road. For us, I mean, we stayed that clear, it was part of the, you know, the conditions. We are using that as the request from the city just for emergency, you know, use, not for our clients.
Excuse me, just for one moment, I just want to point out that what has changed again is that we are adding 102,675,000 square foot, and that is reflected in the conditions of approval. So, just so that it's on the record. Thank you.
I have a question. Did, the footprint didn't change at all adding 30,000 square feet, or was there just something wrong?
No, the footprint hasn't changed. Initially, when they made the application, what they indicated on there was that was net. We deal in gross, so there was a misunderstanding between staff and the applicant, and the purpose of this hearing is to clarify that as well as for the record, showing that it is going to be for this size building, gross, but the building, the footprint has not changed. They will still have to go through a commercial site plan review, however, this is a binding site plan that is modifying this PUD.
At one time, there was a question about the setback from Harden Boulevard and the sidewalk. Was that ever addressed?
Yes. We did increase the setback from Harden Boulevard.
Yes, they have met staff's requests as it relates to the setback. You can see here, I'm going to go to the conditions. I apologize, I thought we had those in there.
And that's a 40-foot setback, Joshua?
Yes, we'd requested that they-
It's showing a 40-inch foot setback, that's correct.
We had asked that they moved the building back to 40 feet to align closer with the setbacks for Azalea Park to the south.
Oh, that's, that was her question.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve? The Board?
All motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item two, change in land use from residential low to residential medium and a major modification of planned unit development zoning on approximately 25.92 acres. And a change in land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to residential medium on approximately 3.81 acres to remove a 29.73-acre parcel of land located south of Town Park Boulevard and west of Yates Road from the planned unit development zoning for Town Park Estates, ordinance 4471 as amended. Owner, English Creek LLC, applicant Sarah Case, next level planning permitting.
Hi, good morning for the record. My name is Philip Scares. I'm principal planner with Community and Economic Development. As the description reads, this is a future land use amendment from residential low and Neighborhood Activity Center to a residential medium future land use category. The request also includes a planned unit development. This, I just want to explain the proceedings as we move forward with this case. This, it will go in two parts. This first hearing today is going to be a public hearing on the land use, so I'm going to discuss the residential low and the NAC land use to residential medium future land use. Next month, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed detailed PUD plan. One thing I'm going to say about the PUD right now is that it's currently located within the Town Park Estates planned unit development. It doesn't have any development entitlements on it other than its stated future institutional use, but we'll get into the PUD portion next month when we discuss the PUD today. We're just really talking about the change in land use from residential low and NAC to a residential medium future land use category. I'll get into that in a minute. So, this is at 5201 Yates Road. It is on the south side of Town Park Boulevard, where we're familiar with, we had the hearing last month on the case to the north, where we still under consideration by the City Commission for 252 multifamily units on the north side. So this is the development parcel here that the applicant is bringing forward due today. And again, this will go, this multifamily public hearing will be held on March 21st with the City Commission. So, so this is Town Park Boulevard, and this is Yates Road, and just right here is West Pipkin Road. It's a 29.73-acre site. So the parcel has two future land use categories on it, the first being residential low, and you can see here residential low, allows for densities between zero and five dwelling units per acre, depending on the natural limitations of the site, and we're going to get into the, some of the natural limitations of the site in a second. It also has a portion that is, a three-acre portion, that is Neighborhood Activity Center. This Town Park Boulevard kind of snakes around a wetland there. I think it was initially planned to go straight, but it was, there's a small wetland here. I'll show you in a second that goes. So, so there's a remnant of this NAC future land use designation. So the request is to go to, from a residential low and NAC to residential medium, and you can see here residential medium allows densities of five to 12 units per acre. So this would be an overall increase in density with the request. When we talk about those natural features on this site, these, this is from the county's wetland inventory, and I will say that when we go out there prior to development, the applicant will need to verify these wetland areas. So this map may be off a little bit, but there are wetlands here. This is a wetland here, and this is a small wetland here. There's approximately 10 acres of upland on this site, on this 20-acre site, so you can see, definitely see the uplands here. And again, prior to any development, during the pod, during, for the podder view, the applicant's going to have to delineate the wetland boundary so we know exactly where those wetland boundaries are to get a better idea of what that, what those wetlands entail and how much upland they will have. But when I did my calculation yesterday, it was around 10 acres. Just going to go around the site, we're kind of familiar with this area from the last multifamily case. This is looking south on Yates Road, looking into the site. This is looking southeast on Yates Road, single-family uses across from Yates Road, on the east side of Yates Road. Again, this is further south. I walked the sidewalk down, further down south on Yates Road, just giving you the nature of development, single-family development in the area. And this is looking north on Yates Road, back up to West Pipkin. And this is Google Earth Street View. This is, there was a lot of cars. There was some construction traffic. I wasn't able to safely get a picture here, but there were some people waiting for the bus, I didn't want to disturb them. So there were parents waiting for the bus on Town Park Boulevard. So this is looking into the site southeast on Town Park Boulevard. And I just wanted to end the slideshow with just the overall, just showing you what's occurring in the area with the Town Park, with the section of Riverstone there, just showing you what the overall development is. You can see here to the southeast is Bruce Wagner Elementary. We have some lower-density residential units in Polk County, and the subdivision here is in Polk County, but it's still single-family residential, and we do take that into consideration. We sent this out for public notice. Again, we sent it just with the land use, and we generally send the PUD site plans, so there wasn't much information that was sent out other than the request. So most of the calls I got were really, three calls, were just more questions, but there were concerns about, you know, the traffic and about the previous multifamily development that was, that's still under consideration. We did get one email in opposition, and there was mostly environmental concerns. They live on, they live on this cul-de-sac here, and I forgot, sorry, it was Song Sparrow, I forgot the name of the road. And, you know, they were, you know, they are definitely concerned about the environmental impacts because there's wetlands, there's wildlife out there. When it comes to development, those wetlands are counted for gross density, but they cannot be, they cannot be developed on. So those, that, so that wetland will definitely act as a natural buffer if any, you know, develop or occur on this upland portion here. With that said, I'm going to leave it up to the, I'm going to turn things over to the applicant and let them explain a little bit more about their project and their proposal, and if you have any questions with staff, I'll be available as well. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Sarah Case, next level planning and permitting. Address is 6700 South Florida Avenue, and that is in Lakeland. Yes, before you, thank you very much, Philip, great presentation. Before you is for consideration just a land use amendment and to kind of clean up and remove almost 30 acres that was included in the Town Park Estates planned unit development. And as Philip said, without any entitlements, there was some discussion over the years of it being some type of institutional use, but that never came to fruition. So with the project that just came before you in the last couple of months, that's on West Pipkin and Yates, should that be approved by the City Commission on the 21st, that will have achieved residential high. We're asking for residential medium as a transition from that residential high to the residential low that is to the south of our request. We did file an application for zoning, and again, you'll hear that next month, but because this was advertised and staff wanted to discuss zoning in addition to just the land use and the removal of the PUD distinction on this property, we'll be back before you next month on this. Again, we are very aware of the environmental restraints on this property and the very large in quality wetland on site, and we will not be interfering with that in any way. And as a matter of fact, the buffer that Philip alluded to, it's going to be well over 400 feet from the nearest single-family home to our west. So we will be, you know, considering that wetland. We will not be interfering with the wetland. And again, we'll be back before you next month with a companion zoning. So I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the Board? Take comments from the audience at this time? Anyone from the audience? We're waiting to vote on this until the next meeting, I guess.
Yes, sir. We'll have more details when, with the PUD, it'll be more detailed development proposal that will go along with the PUD ordinance. And again, it's to remove this from the existing Town Park planned unit development, so it will be its own planned unit development.
So effectively, next month, we'll continue the hearing and bring in the request for the zoning application. Staff, however, will not present a recommendation until the following month, in May, for both the land use and the zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Item three, small-scale land use amendment to change the future land use designation from mixed commercial corridor to community activity center and a major modification of planned unit development zoning to allow for a three-story 104,625-square-foot commercial building consisting of a 101,625-square-foot mini warehouse self-storage facility with 3,000 square foot on ground floor. Retail uses on approximately 2.14 acres located at 1141 East Memorial Boulevard. Owner, William Thomas Memes. Applicant, Shelton Rice Peterson &amp; Myers, PA.
Good morning again. For the record, Philip Scares with Community and Economic Development. Mr. Roberts, I'm glad you got through those numbers because I would have been tongue-tied reading all those numbers. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. This is a land use and zoning amendment at the southwest corner of North Lake Parker and Memorial, East Memorial. This is a site here, we'll drill down here a little bit closer. This is the site, this is North Lake Parker, East Memorial, here's Skate World here for reference. There's a city warehouse, purchasing and warehouse just to the south here. It has an existing PUD that allows limited C2 uses on it, and I think it's just been vacant for quite some time from when I did my aerial search yesterday. I think the last development I saw on it was around 1999. It was, looked like, appeared to be some type of manufactured housing sales lot there. But as I scroll up through Google Earth, you know, the history on Google Earth, from, really from 1999 up, it was just maybe only used temporarily with some tents, you know, tent uses, things like that, but it's been vacant for quite some time. So we are proposing, or the applicant is proposing, excuse me, a land use amendment from existing mixed commercial corridor future land use designation to a CAC future land use designation. This is across the street at the First Baptist Church at the mall. So this pink CAC will kind of, will go across the road right here, so this will be included within that CAC area. The reason for the land use change is that the intensities increase within our central city area. Currently, the MCC in the central city area only has a, only carries a 0.5 or 50% floor area ratio. Within the CAC, that ratio, that floor area ratio is bumped up to 1.5 floor area ratio, and that's basically just a ratio of square footage based on the amount of acres you have. So when you have a 1.5 FAR, you tend, on a small site like this, you, with the square footage, you tend to go up, and that's what this application is for. They're doing a three-story self-storage facility. And again, because- And again, because it's within our urban corridor, we require some retail component of that. So there's 3,000 square feet of retail that's associated with this request as well. And we'll go around the site with some slides here. This is just showing the zoning. And again, it'll still be the same zoning category, just the land use will change to that CAC. But the zoning category will allow for this, if approved, will allow for the self-storage facility and retail. So this is looking south on Lake Parker. You can see the city's warehouse and purchasing facility here, and you can Skate World there in the background. This is looking west on East Memorial. And this is looking south directly into the site. I don't know if you remember, a long time ago, we did a PUD, modified our PUD establishment for the CarMax facility over on 98. This site reminds me very much of that. It's a, you know, vacant site for a very long time. It's just kind of blighted, overgrown, a lot of weeds and trash on the site. This is looking southwest. And this is standing on Lake Parker, looking west into the site. So the, again, three-story self-storage facility, you can see here, the elevations, side elevation. And then this is the site plan here. So the, this is the proposed structure, parking coming in off of East Memorial, and then with an exit off Lake Parker. I do want to point out that there is a cross-access easement with the church facility next door. There's an easement, and then the church members can kind of cross the site here. They are, from my understanding, they're still maintaining the easement. However, they won't use the south side of the site. They'll be able to have a cross-accement here and then go around the site. If I'm not mistaken, I'll have to ask the applicant that, but that's, cross-accesses will still remain with the church. With that, I will let the applicant discuss their proposal, and staff will be here, I'll be here for, if you have any questions for staff.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. For the record, my name's Shelton Rice. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Peterson and Myers, address 225 East Lemon Street, Lakeland, Florida. Today, I'm here on behalf of RCG Ventures and Stein Investment Group. I have a representative from both of those groups with me today. For RCG, I have Mr. Jeff Miller in the crowd, and then for Stein Investment Group, I have Mr. Daniel Ginberg here. Thank you, Mr. Scare, for that excellent presentation. He's gone through, it's eerily similar to the presentation I have, so I'll move quickly. But seeing that this is kind of the second self-storage project that's been on the agenda today, I'm going to ask Mr. Ginberg, our client that has a lot of experience building self-storage projects, to give a little bit of discussion, just briefly, about market demands and why self-storage is appropriate in this area, in particular in Lakeland, and how this industry has kind of changed in recent history. So having said that, Mr. Ginberg?
Could you be sure that Mike is tilted towards you?
Is this good? Great. Thank you, everybody. My name is Daniel Ginberg, with Stein Investment Group, 5607 Glenridge Drive, Atlanta, Georgia. Stein Investment Group is a third-generation family real estate office. We've developed self-storage, multifamily, retail. Our background is really retail, but about 10 years ago, we got into, or 11 years ago, we got into the self-storage business and have owned and developed more than 50 facilities throughout the southeast. We're in Florida. We actually have a new facility in Plant City on James Redmond. So if you guys have time, I'd go by. It looks very good. A little bit different product, that one's single-story, but nice-looking facility. And we develop Class A facilities. So for example, like this one, this is a 100% interior climate-controlled facility, so no outdoor storage, no boat or RV parking, strictly just climate-controlled units. We've, what attracted us to this site specifically is, we like retail sites that aren't necessarily great for retailers. So for example, this has good traffic counts, but it doesn't have the great, the best access. So to get your, you know, high-credit or high-quality retailers, you need high-quality access, and this site doesn't necessarily have that. But we have the retail visibility, which we like a lot. We also look at several market drivers. We look at population, we look at current supply, we look at rental rates, and a few others. I can get into the details if you'd like, but those market drivers in our analysis point towards an undersupply of storage in this market. A saturation limit for storage, self-storage in a market like Lakeland or, you know, Florida, where there's relatively smaller living quarters, no basements, you have a higher saturation limit than you would, let's say, in a suburban market in Atlanta, for example. So this market is approximately, our trade area is approximately five square feet per person, and a market like Lakeland here, we would estimate it to be, the saturation limit to be around 12 square feet per person. So it's a, we're undersupplied, the market is undersupplied by about 60%. So that's what really attracted us to this site. It looked very, it's undersupplied, it's got great visibility, it doesn't have great access, but that's okay for storage because, you know, we only have 12 customers a day coming, so we don't have a lot of traffic volume. We don't impact the county or city's infrastructure all that much. We have two toilets in this facility for the storage facility. So it's really low-impact use, low intensity. So if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to walk through. So Shelton, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ginberg. Is that better? I'm sorry, I'm a little shorter than most of the people speaking. So I appreciate that, and I think that speaks to a little bit about why you're seeing some of these self-storage projects coming on, why I know there's some other projects that are interested in this market. As you have more residential units, that demand, of course, increases for this type of use. So looking at the location map, and I'll move quickly through these because Mr. Scare did an excellent job. This is just southwest of Lake Parker. It's at the intersection of Lake Parker Avenue and Memorial Boulevard. As you can see, the subject property here outlined in red, I'm going to try the clicker. There we go. So this is the Chevron gas station, the Lakes Church is located here, this is Epic Church, and then as Mr. Scare identified, the utility, the City of Lakeland facility, Skate World, and then a car wash facility and other commercial uses located here, as well as a medical office at the northeast corner of the intersection. And so you can see this area, just from looking at this aerial, is very well-developed. It's almost fully developed, this being one of the only vacant parcels, which is pretty commonly referred to as an infill-type development. This is the last piece where there's infrastructure in place that hasn't been developed in this immediate area. Just a couple of views looking southwest from the intersection. You can see the vacant area, the City of Lakeland utility, and Purchasing Center in the back, and then some of the other surrounding properties. This is looking north, back towards the intersection from Lake Parker Avenue. You can see the lighted intersection, and of course, the vacant tract. So when we look at this property, it's approximately 2.14 acres, has frontage on Memorial, Lake Parker, as we mentioned. The future land use designation is currently mixed commercial corridor. It's in the urban corridor, context district. It has a zoning designation on it of PUD from 1994 that allowed C2 uses. So the C2 permitted use table that we looked at currently would allow self-storage uses. So really not doing something that's contrary to what we see as being a use that would be allowed in this area. The reason we have to do some of these changes and make these modifications is, one, because it's a PUD, we have to modify it for the site plan, and secondarily, we have to change the future land use designation to increase the floor area ratio, as Mr. Scare identified. It's a mixed-use project, self-storage mixed with a component of retail. There's an office that's associated with the self-storage space as well. So when, we have different types of projects that come in and meet with us and go through the development process, and they can kind of be categorized into two different types. One type is somebody that owns some property that wants to change their entitlements to increase the value of their property. So they really don't have an intended use, they just want to increase their entitlements for potential resale or for whatever other reason they may have. The other project, which is the majority of our projects, we have a buyer that has the property under contract, they have a specific intended use for the site. That's what we have here, where they want to build and develop a self-storage facility with this retail component. When we have that, our first step in the process is typically, let's look to see, can they utilize the property for that use currently? And if not, what is the necessary approvals that are required in order for them to be able to develop the site? So that's kind of dictated, okay, they want to develop self-storage, what do we have to do to get there, to make this site viable for that project? So when we looked at that, we had to do a small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment to change the future land use designation. As Mr. Scare identified, the floor area ratio of 0.5 is not large enough or high enough to allow a self-storage facility on this site. We have to change that to the community activity center. Changing the future land use designation will allow that site to develop with up to a 1.5 FAR, which our site does fit within. And then we have to modify the PUD, modifying the PUD to allow the mixed-use project. We have a binding site plan, of which I'll show in a moment, and some additional and alternative development standards that we've identified. So looking at the future land use map, you can see this is currently, as it sits, MCC. You have CAC to the north of the site with the Lakes Church, and as well, farther to the west, and then this MCC area located along Memorial as you go east, and then this PI, professional institutional, I believe.
Public institutional.
Public institutional, thank you, located around the site as well. And so our proposed, you can see, the community activity center, just extending the CAC to the north, to the south, across Memorial Boulevard. Looking at some of the design and location criteria for community activity centers, these, and this, I pulled from the Land Development Code, or the, I believe it was from the Comprehensive Plan related to CAC. So some of the location criteria is, you want this to be in an intersection of two major roads. We have that with Lake Parker Avenue and Memorial Boulevard. You want a design for well-connected, multimodal internal access, and where feasible vehicular cross-access. We're working, as Mr. Scare identified, we're working with the church to our west regarding a cross-access easement that exists. That's still kind of in conversation. We know that there's an easement that's out there today. We don't know exactly our ability to move that easement, but at a minimum, we anticipate that cross-access will still be provided to the property to our west. So the planned unit development, so now shifting to the second component of our request, not the land use change, but the PUD modification. Mixed-use project, 100 plus or minus thousand square feet of self-storage, 3,000 square feet of retail space along the frontage, 800 square feet of office accessory to the self-storage use. We have multiple access points and parking. The site has been designed so that the parking is laid out adjacent to the retail. So we had originally pushed the site up and closer to the roads and had most of the parking along the southern side of the site. We flipped that so, with this retail component, and made it so that the parking was adjacent to the retail, more consistent with what you typically see. You want to pull into a storefront, park right outside of the store, and go inside. So this is the zoning map, we're just modifying the PUD. You can see some of the commercial and office zoning designations located around our site. Looking at the PUD, you can see the access here from Memorial Boulevard, proposing a right-in, right-out, and a right-in, right-out off of Lake Parker as well. Property, as I've mentioned, 100,000 plus or minus square feet. We're looking at 21 parking spaces, climate-controlled facility. This is all internal access, so you don't have the roll-up doors that many people think of when you think of self-storage, the orange roll-up doors. That's not what this is. This is all climate-controlled and all-accessed, internal to the building. So these are some elevations, and these have been updated for staff's edification. They've been updated and reflect more of the retail use on the frontage. So this top one, as you can see here, has a retail-type look, of course, where the retail spaces will be, and then it has a feel for more of a residential-type view shed on the top of the site, looking at the second and third story. So that's intentional to try to make it look like it's not a self-storage facility, has at least the appearance of a mixed-use retail and residential-type product. And then you can see, the second picture down below is the view that you would see from Memorial Boulevard, excuse me, from Lake Parker Avenue. This is the elevation, so another bird's-eye view, looking at it if you are above the intersection of Lake Parker and Memorial, looking back to the southwest, you can see kind of the site and the building, how it would lay out, how it would function. So this is our landscape plan, and staff has not had an opportunity to see this. This is something that we just got yesterday, so this is still kind of in the works and has been evaluated, but we're looking at approximately 43 plantings. You can see well buffering around the exterior to the west, and then along the southern boundary, that's a continuous hedge, not proposing planting significant trees along this boundary. Of course, we're adjacent to the utility, to our south, is the City of Lakeland property that has a pretty substantial wall in place already, and then buffering as you look along the roadways that are adjacent to the site. So one of the benefits of having a client that has a lot of these projects is that you can use some of the data and the information that they have from their other sites. So these are three other sites that they've pulled, and based on their access, which is done, all of it being internal, they have access cards, and so they can monitor how many different people come into the building with that access. So they've compiled some data to identify, how many trips do these projects really generate? You hear self-storage is a pretty low-traffic generator, but this puts some data to that notion. Three different projects located in the southeast, and you can see the average customer trips per day is somewhere in the range of 12 trips for similar-sized buildings, so very minimal traffic impacts. When you think of a single-family home, the rule of thumb is generally seven trips per day for a single-family unit. So 100,000 square feet seems like a lot of space, but the impact that they'll have on the roadway relatively insignificant based on similar data that they've had on other projects. And then looking just briefly at some of the other impact analysis, we talked about the roadways, the retail component, which I find interesting. It's only 3,000 square feet of retail, but significantly more traffic generated for the retail, although still somewhat nominal. You're looking at 8.13 PM peak hour trips, 132 trips per day, based on the concurrency application and the calculations that are in, that staff has created. Water, minimal usage for water, minimal uses for wastewater. So this is really a low-intensity type use as far as infrastructure that's required for these types of uses in particular. So in conclusion, I'm sorry if I've been a little long-winded. Two components to our request. One is to change the future land use designation from MCC to CAC to allow us to build this site on this property, because we have to have a higher floor area ratio than is currently for the MCC land use district. And then secondarily, we have to modify the existing PUD to allow this site, this project, and to submit and have approved a binding site plan. We believe this is consistent with the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. We've talked with some of our experts regarding access. We believe those issues can be worked through with DOT and the necessary jurisdictions. We've talked about the minimal impacts related to the infrastructure. We believe this is a good project, is a good client that does appealing buildings that are attractive, and so we respectfully request a favorable vote on this project. We'll stand for any questions. Thank you for your time.
I have a question. What is the reason for the single-story in Plant City in Hillsborough County? Is there a zoning ordinance that caused it to be just single-story?
No, there was, we were able to acquire more land in that situation, and so, single-story from a from a cost standpoint is less expensive than multi-story. So we are look, we, in that scenario, we were able to build single-story just because we had more land in Plant City.
I have one more question. As you clearly said earlier, you don't consider this a high-end retail area, so what retail do you foresee going in there?
I don't necessarily know if it's high-end, it's just, it's a difficult retail site. So I would assume, you know, your nail salons or haircut, or you know, salons, but I'm not, we haven't done a whole lot of study. The, the, staff requested per the urban corridor, we have, we implement, or we include retail. So if it was our choice, we would not choose it, because we're not sure, we're 100% confident that it will be successful, but we're willing to accommodate the request.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any similarities to this proposed structure to, to the one in Plant City aesthetically?
Yes, I mean, we, we designed each facility to be Class A, high-end. The one in Plant City might look a little different, just because it's a, a single-story facility, but really, the facade, the street-facing facade in Plant City is really nice. It's a brick-water table, nice materials, looks like a retail store. When you walk, when you walk into the storage office, it feels like a hotel lobby. So we have water and internet and, you know, it, it's very welcoming. So that is a standard for all of our facilities. You just don't have the height in Plant City versus you would have here. But it, honestly, with our parapet, with the architectural design, it looks like a two-story building. And I forgot to mention, we own and manage all of these facilities under our brand, which is Space Shop Self-Storage. So we, we're a top-15 operator in the country, and we are, since we own and manage them ourselves, we're very hands-on, so the facility's very clean, it's very secure, it's very welcoming. So we take a lot of pride in what we do, because we're long-term owners, so we put a lot of attention into what we build.
And what is the exact address in Plant City?
I'll let, give me one second, I'll let you know.
So what I have here is a couple of printouts that I excluded from our presentation, but I'd like to, with staff's consent, hand these out of similar, these are pictures of similar projects, or renderings of similar projects that they've done, kind of throughout the southeast. It's not going to be identical to what we're proposing here, but it gives you a sense of the type of product they do. So do you have any objection to us handing this out?
Yeah, Phil, can you show them on the overhead if you hand them to him?
These elevations, or these pictures are, just want to remind you, these are specific to different code and different municipalities with different requirements, and also the feel for that neighborhood, for certain neighborhoods. That address is 1819 James Redmond Parkway.
Thank you.
It's, it's across from, if you're coming into Plant City on East Park, I'd like you to come in by the, the baseball stadium. Right there at East Park, you have a CVS, and, why, excuse me, you have a Walgreens and the Speedway. If you take a left right there, going towards the public shopping center, it's on the, it's on the opposite side of where the shopping center is.
It's adjacent to the Autozone.
Yeah.
So this, this facility in particular, this is in a suburb, north suburb of Atlanta, called Woodstock. Just, this is a multi-story, this is actually a, is a four-story building, but it's, the fourth story is actually a basement level. So the one thing about self-storage is that your, your floor plates are 10-foot-8, which is smaller than retail. Retail's like, could be 12 feet or more. So this three-story facility that we're proposing would be somewhere between 45 and 50 feet, so not as tall as a typical three-story office building, per se.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Did I have a question about the, the existing billboard that's on the side? Are you aware of the Lamar advertising? And can you maybe explain what's going to happen with that, that this goes for the, the rezoning and the selling of property?
Yeah, that, that will be removed as part of our development.
Okay, so that will, that will terminate and be removed from the property. Okay, thank you, just wanted to get that in record.
Anyone else?
As far as the retail, what, what guidance or limitations would the city provide to them of what could go in there under proposed zoning?
Based on the, this grid footage, I mean, retail, it's going to be probably more general retail, like indicated, more either personal services, haircut, nail salons, small sandwich shop, maybe a tailoring service, stuff like that. That's probably what we would expect to see at that, that scale there, than that, than market.
Anyone else?
Mr. Scares, we have, I believe, one more picture. Thank you. Just to give an example, they don't all look the same, but this is, you know, some of the styles that they've, they've utilized. So, thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Motion to approve the request?
We'll come back next month with a staff report. Yes, sir, thank you.
Item four, small-scale, is item four, right? Small-scale land use amendment to change the future land use designation from Neighborhood Activity Center to Residential Medium, and a major modification of planned unit development zoning for Lakeside Preserve, ordinance 4382 as amended. Concurrent with a city-initiated request to change the context sub-district designation from suburban corridor to suburban neighborhood on approximately 5.76 acres, to allow for up to 120 additional multifamily dwelling units, in lieu of 20,000 square foot of, square feet of retail personal service, services uses, and 45,000 square foot of office institutional and hotel uses on approximately 8.57 acres, located at the southeast corner of Parkway Frontage Road South and Pippen Creek Road. Owners, PNH Properties LLC and the Housing Authority of the City of Lakeland, Florida. Applicant, Timothy Campbell, Clark Campbell Lancaster Workman and Earth, PA.
Good morning again, for the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. The subject property is an 8.57-acre parcel. It does have PUD zoning currently, and it also has Neighborhood Activity Center, future land use, which you can see here. Sorry, the pointer's not working. There you go. This PUD was originally approved in 2002, and has been modified several times over the years, and most recently in 2019 for the Lakeside Preserve, single-family residential component of this PUD, which is located to the south and the southeast of the site, and I'll show you that in just a moment. Couple slides showing you the actual site. This is looking southwest near the intersection of Pippen Creek Road and South Parkway Frontage And then this is a better shot, looking east over the site. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant, and then you can see, this is the entrance to Lakeside Preserve. Again, this is single-family residential, all down here, you may recall seeing that several years ago. The applicant Alliance Realty Partners LLC has requested a change in the future land use on the subject property from Neighborhood Activity Center to Residential Medium. We'll go back to that real quick. So that the PUD can be modified to allow for a maximum of 120 multifamily units on the property, which is adjacent to this parcel, which is approved for 271 multifamily units. This is currently owned by the Lakeland Housing Authority. We'll go back to the site plan. So essentially, they need to change the land use and modify the PUD, as well as change the, the context sub-district designation from suburban corridor to suburban neighborhood, and that would be on approximately 5.76 acres of this property, for the purposes of getting entitlements for a multifamily component. And again, this area here already is approved for 271 multifamily units, and the request before you today is to change the land use and modify the PUD for this portion here. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. For purposes of your record, my name is Tim Campbell, the law firm, Clark Campbell Lancaster Workman and Earth. The applicant in this case, I'm here today representing Alliance Residential Company. And you can see our case numbers and our general information for Alliance. They're a company, one of the largest and most active rental residential real estate developers in the United States, through 16 states and 39 metropolitan markets. Let's just kind of give you an overview of their development envelope, largely in the south and extending to the east and west coast. With me here today are Bobby Anderson, the Managing Director for Alliance, Elliot Simmons, the Development Manager, and since the city has its own Matthew Lyons, we included one on our team, who's our Design Engineer with Catalyst Design Group. And I've, yes, I've emailed each of them the wrong time, because their names pop up and I keep messing that up. Pros, you keep saying pros on this, that's, that's their, they have kind of a couple different lines of their multifamily product, and pros is their, by far their largest, and that's the product that they propose here in Lakeland. The presentation, it is a little confusing, but here's the entire site plan, and, and the staff has asked for this, and we're careful, because on the existing piece, there is a PUD that already allows 271 units, there's not a binding site plan, we're not requesting any change to that. But to give you the entire picture, you can see, and, where's the light? So, you can see this line here, and so the rest of this is already existing. It has PUD zoning, it's already allowed to be developed for 271 units. Alliance has come in and placed this additional piece under contract, and the purpose of the application is to add that, to get the, the PUD zoning change, to allow 120 additional units there, to ultimately allow for a combined project. And I'll tell you that, in the commercial, the existing commercial zoning for the PUD, it already allows up to 20% of that area for multifamily. So 20% is already multifamily, we're just changing it to reflect this plan, and then there's the land use change from NAC to residential medium to clean that up. But there's the site plan. Again, so what I'm calling the adjacent property, which is what's already zoned, that, that Alliance has control of, approved for 271 multifamily units, and we're not requesting any PUD changes to that parcel. The subject property, the corner, is, we're requesting 120 multifamily units on approximately 5.76 acres, replacing 20,000 square feet of retail, 40,000 square feet of office and hotel use. And I'll tell you, generally, if you're familiar with this, with this area, it really has not been an ideal location on a one-way frontage road for a commercial type of use. And so that's why it has sat unused for that purpose, and, and Alliance has brought it into their project plan. That's kind of another demarcation of the difference between the existing and whatever color that is, and the blue in the corner is the, kind of the subject to this request. Just to give you an idea, some of the pros, kind of, design features, as I said, Alliance does this all over the country. Some of the interior design, they have presently, between existing, under construction, and those in, that are being worked through, like this one, 182 projects in the United States and approximately 53,000 units. So they're a very experienced developer, and they're, they're excited in our market as there is a very high demand and need for additional multifamily units. Here's some more features of some of their units. You heard staff's report, we work closely with them, we're, we're very comfortable with their analysis, we think it's an appropriate use, it's adjacent to the existing 271 units, it's in a very good location, and we stand available for any questions that you have, and we respectfully request your favorable recommendation of our application.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question, in terms of how this site and this property would be coordinated with the adjacent property to the east. Is the intent to develop this as a unified multifamily apartment community, basically developed at the same time, under, under one master plan development?
Yes. So the, the blue was placed under contract later, so they're moving forward full steam ahead on the existing, but with this board and the city commission's approval for this request, they plan to do this all together.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any examples in the region that we can go look of any other developments?
Mr. Anderson's going to address you on that.
Bobby Anderson, Alliance Residential. Yeah, to answer your question, is we have a deal in St. Cloud under construction right now, that we're actually about to have our clubhouse done and get first units on in May. In addition to that, we have two projects in Orange County that we could also send you to.
Anything else? Any other questions?
What is the breakdown of the units as far as three-bedroom, two-bedroom?
One-bedrooms and two-bedrooms.
One and two?
So almost a 50-50 mix.
Okay. Cost, monthly cost rental?
We expect the rental rates to be on par with some of the older property in the area. So you've got the deal right next to the mall there that Gray Star is managing, and then you have the other one across the street. So this is 20-year-old product. We think that, well, we know we can build this and rent this, even being brand-new, at those kind of rental rates. So even though it's newer and should get a higher rent, we think it's important to try to keep rents in a reasonable rate, considering that rents are now $1.80 a square foot on 20-year-old product in the Lakeland area.
And your one-bed, and what are they going to run, what are you planning on running for? I mean, I'm not going to hold you to this, but what, what's your thoughts?
We're roughly, I should have this in front of me, but I can give you at least a rough... We're probably around $1,500 a month on a one-bedroom.
A one-bedroom?
What's that?
For a one-bedroom?
For a one-bedroom.
Okay.
Unfortunately, with this kind of product and everything else, even as of two years ago, we could bring that down to 1,200, $1,300, but as you guys have seen with lumber and other material costs, it's, it's getting tougher and tougher to kind of bring those rents down any further without subsidizing our project.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the audience?
Hi, I'm David Pendry, and I live in Lakeside Preserve, 1560 Hollow Tree Court. My question is, how will this development impact Lakeside Preserve, and will there be any road connection between those developments?
Bobby?
So to answer your question, is, I believe city staff wants us connect to Lakeside Preserve Boulevard. We're in discussions with Pippen Creek right now, who has all the rest of lots for the remaining phases. remaining phases, to try to figure out what they're going to need and what we're going to need in order to move through permits on that. Some of this is going to be dependent upon staff and whether they want two connections out to Pippen Creek and whether we've got to go down to Lakeside Preserve. But part of why we secured this retail parcel and why we're going through the zoning here is that this gives us a exit out here without having to connect to Lakeside Preserve if needed, so that we have an access point. Right now, the only access point for the Lakeland Housing Authority site is actually on the one-way frontage road right where the Parkway drops off, so it'd be a traffic nightmare if we had everybody coming out of here. So that's the reason behind it. Some of that's going to be whether or not we connect the two communities and have access through the communities is going to be dependent upon where staff requires us to do.
Right now, we have 135 homes that are already built, the last one is being built now, and we understand that there's going to be another, I don't know, 125 homes built down to the east of Lakeside Preserve. And there's only one way in or out right now onto east, into Pippen Creek Road. At times in the morning, because of construction on Pippen Road to the south, that traffic really backs up. So I mean, we start talking about another 200 and something homes, and they're all coming out into the Lakeside Preserve Boulevard. You know, it's, it could be a nightmare trying to get in and out, being that we only have one, one way in and one way out of Lakeside Preserve, and the fact of Pippen Creek Road was designed to be a counting road, I mean, it's, and then you have, when you get down to Drain Field and the south frontage road or whatever you, no, yeah, south, south frontage road, then it goes from a two-way there at the convenience store to a one-way as you're going to the east. So I mean, something needs to be done with that intersection when you start adding a whole bunch of, he said seven trips a day for vehicles coming in and out residential?
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that a little further. So in the PUD, there is interconnectivity required, so we're required to connect, and we're glad to do so, and there's just an issue that the staff's working through. You can see on the exhibit here that out of our entrance, we provide for a roadway that would connect to the south to Lakeside Preserve Boulevard, and we actually have an easement down to Lakeside Preserve Boulevard, but we don't have an easement, or easement over Lakeside Preserve. So we're working on that. Alliance is happy to interconnect, and we'll do whatever the staff and the city work out, but we have planned for that interconnection so that there would be two points of access to serve all of Lakeside Preserve.
And I think just to add to that is that, so in addition to trying to work with the guys that have the lots down where you live and trying to create that internet connectivity because they need to give us an easement, we're more than willing to give them an easement so you guys can drive out this way as well to have the two points. And then further is we're working with the same traffic engineer as a single-family to determine what needs to be done up here at Pippen and Drain Field, because we do agree that, you know, trying to make a left there and everybody trying to make a right is that you're probably getting some buildup there. So we're looking into what those options are, and the good news is that if we need to do something up here, there's plenty of right-of-way between our site and Pippen Creek to do something there. So we're working with staff on that.
Oh, thank you very much. And just to kind of provide some additional background from a staff perspective, back when the original PUD, Plan Unit Development, was approved back in 2002, it was called Palm Springs at the time, but the expectation was that the street system, the entire PUD would be public. When Lakeside Preserve, you know, kind of moved forward 15 years, when Lakeside Preserve was developed, the street system was private. And so we did have a concern at the time about how access would be maintained to the property in the gold, which is currently owned by the Housing Authority, to the public street system. Because the easement comes down, does connect to Lakeside Preserve Boulevard, but does not, as Mr. Campbell said, does not actually run down Lakeside Preserve Boulevard back to Pippen Creek Road. So we had received an understanding from the single-family developer that they would provide access to the Housing Authority tract, either gated or ungated for emergency and non-emergency access. So it could be managed as a private, as a private system, but, you know, that access needs to be provided. So the good news, at least from my perspective, is that the acquisition of the property on the corner does provide a second access that could help serve not only the residential, the multifamily we've got here, but also neighborhood of 454 and 50 single-family homes that build out in the existing Lakeside Preserve development to the south. We are working with the traffic consultant who's working for both projects, and one of our messages to them is that with this being a PUD, we need to see how the entire, the entirety of the PUD's traffic impacts are being addressed and how that can be phased. So those are the things that we're working through right now, but that is a big concern, is that we don't want to get into a situation where, you know, the single-family, you know, looks at theirs independently, multifamily looks at theirs separately, and we don't end up connecting the dots. And so that is a very big issue that we have, but our focus has been Pippen Creek and Drain Field Road. And one of the challenges we have as you start to move further east is, is that the jurisdiction, you know, really starts to get murky once you get onto the Parkway-Furnace Road system in terms of DOT District 1, managed out of Barto versus Turnpike Enterprise, limited access, there are a whole host of other complications we're actually running into with other development nearby that involves the Parkway-Furnace Road system. So as much as we can stay away from that, provide access to Pippen Creek Road, address the Drain Field intersection, the better off I think everybody will be going forward.
Any other comments? Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item five, review of minutes for the February meeting.
Any questions on the minutes? Any comments? Any changes? Motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes from the February meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six, major modification of Plan Unit Development zoning to allow a very high turnover restaurant use on property located at 3524 Lakeland Highlands Road. Owner: Sam's East, Inc. Applicant: Stacy Ranuki. Mosaic Red Hat Group, LLC. Note: This is continued from a previous meeting.
Good morning. For the record, Todd Vargo with Community and Economic Development. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Lakeland Highlands Road and Meadowland Park Boulevard. It is currently vacant. It's approximately one acre in size and has a future land use district of Community Activity Center and is currently zoned PUD 4300. The purpose of this request is to amend the PUD zoning to allow for the development of a very high turnover restaurant. They want an Arby's. The proposed restaurant is 2,330, sorry, 2,332 square foot with 43 seats and a drive-through facility. If approved, the proposed changes to the PUD will only allow the very high turnover restaurant on this, which is Lot 2 of the Sam's Club PUD. The current PUD zoning, which has been in effect since 2001, allows for the Sam's Club, which you can see in the lower right-hand corner, as well as a fueling station, which is right underneath the word "subject property." And those, the out parcels, there's four out parcels with this Sam's Club PUD, are each allowed 8,000 square foot of retail commercial uses, and those uses are those permitted by right within C5 zoning district, with certain high-impact uses prohibited, and one of those is the very high turnover, fast-food, quick-service type restaurants. That's why they are here to amend that. So you may look at Lakeland Highlands Road and just say, wow, I can't believe we prohibit very high turnover restaurants there. It's four lanes, it's got a lot of, a lot of traffic on it. Well, at the time the PUD was adopted in 2001, Lakeland Highlands Road was a two-lane collector road. In the mid-2000s, the city widened Lakeland Highlands Road to it is now with four lanes, plus dedicated turning and deceleration lanes, sidewalks and bicycle lanes. And then in 2010, the county did a similar widening to Lakeland Highlands Road south of the Parkway, which, which was in the county system. Following completion of this road widening, there are some development occurred along Lakeland Highlands Road. There was a very high turnover restaurant, The Wendy's, a low-turnover restaurant, The Mellow Mushroom Pizza, and a car wash all came in across the street in the Lakeland Marketplace Shopping Center. And then more recently, you may remember some modifications that came in on the east side of Lakeland Highlands Road. In early 2020, the PUD was amended to allow a self-storage facility at the northeast corner of Lakeland Highlands Road and Meadowland Park. And then later that same year, and sorry, it's not on the slide, it's back further back here, there is a Veterans Administration Medical Clinic that was approved. So here, this is, I believe I'm in The Wendy's parking lot, looking across, kind of to the northeast. This is the self-storage facility that was just mentioned. This is the site right over here that the Arby's occupy. It's again looking from Wendy's across over to Meadowland Park Boulevard. This is the Arby's site, and this is the, these trucks are the constructions for the And then this is interior to, on Meadowland Park Boulevard. So now we're looking west. This is the Arby's site here. You can see the Wendy's is right here, and there's Lowe's, and I think that's a Bell's outlet over there. So with all that development, traffic can be a bit of a concern. I don't, I was going to let Mr. Barnby, if he wanted to address some of the traffic concerns that we have, because we did ask them to do a major traffic study.
Sure, and just jumping in real quick, the trip generated by the project would trigger our typical threshold for requiring a major traffic study. Our issues here weren't necessarily concurrency-related, but it was more operational-related. So as Mr. Vargo stated, with all the new development that we have occurring in and around this area, we wanted to make sure that the driveway shown in this picture continued to function properly as we started to look at build-out of everything in the surrounding area. So what we'll get into when we start getting into the conditions is how this intersection can be treated to be able to accommodate this traffic, and we feel comfortable that it can accommodate all of this traffic by essentially creating a three-way stop condition so that if you're heading westbound, if you're heading northbound where that white vehicle's coming out onto Meadowland Park Drive, or if you're coming out of the self-storage facility, you would have to have, you would have to stop before you proceed forward. If you're coming from Lakeland Highlands Road, you'd be able to come in without having to stop. It's a very typical type configuration that you find in a retail environment, felt comfortable that that would work here. And so Mr. Vargo will get into those specific conditions, but we just wanted to kind of highlight the fact that the main issue was how this intersection operated. We did ask the traffic engineer also to provide a comparison between the very high turnover restaurant and the existing allowable high-turnover restaurant uses. You're looking at about 75 P&amp;P counter trips versus about 45 P&amp;P counter trips. So it would be more, but it's not, it's not a huge difference from that standpoint. So we feel comfortable with the recommendations that we have in the staff report and recommending approval with those conditions being addressed.
Thank you. Here's the site plan. It's a bit different than the one that you saw back in January when this was first heard. I believe they've done some modifications to the internal circulation. The trash, garbage dumpster was relocated, and I think there are some changes as well to the drive-through lane. The drive-through lane will be situated so that the speaker and the actual pickup is away from Lakeland Highlands Road. This is Lakeland Highlands over here, this is Meadowland Park, so on this map, north is up. Here is the elevation that will face Meadowland Park Boulevard, and this is the elevation facing Lakeland Highlands Road. Again, the drive-through pickup will be on the opposite side. Back to the, to the site plan. We did notify, send out letters for notification, and we have not received any comments. And I'm going to get into the changes to the conditions of approval for PUD 4300. This is dealing with the out parcels and what's permitted, and actually what is prohibited, sorry. This is the list of prohibited uses, convenience stores, and we're going to keep very high turnover restaurants prohibited with the footnote or the asterisk that except no more than one very high turnover restaurant shall be permitted on Lot 2, as described in Attachment A, and depicted on Attachments F, G1, and G2. F is the site plan that you saw. G1 and G2 are the elevations that you saw. E, the site development plan. The site shall be developed in accordance with the proposed site development plans included as Attachments C, D, and F. With the approval of the Director of Community and Economic Development, minor alterations shall be made, or may be made, at the time of site plan review without requiring a modification to the PUD zoning. So F will be the site plan for the Arby's, and I believe C and D are, C is the overall site plan for the PUD, and D is the site plan for Sam's Club. Again, back in, what was it, 2001, access. Public road access to the site shall be limited to those driveways illustrated on the site development plan. The internal site driveway for the very high turnover fast-food restaurant shall align with the internal exit from the fueling station, and site queuing shall not extend into this out partial driveway. G, parking landscaping and buffering shall be in accordance with the City of Lakeland Land Development Code. The queuing area and menu board for the very high turnover fast-food restaurant shall be screened from public view from Lakeland Highlands Road through enhanced landscaping. K, sidewalks. A sidewalk shall be constructed along self-storage sites Meadowland Park Drive frontage and along the eastern boundary of the very high turnover restaurant on Lot 2. An ADA-compliant pedestrian route shall be constructed between the sidewalk and the self-storage facilities principal building, principal building entrance, as well as between this sidewalk and the very high turnover fast-food restaurant. And then this is going into the, I think what Chuck was talking about, Meadowland Park Drive operations prior to certificate of occupancy issuance for the very high turnover fast-food restaurant. One, the Lakeland Highlands Road Meadowland Park Boulevard signal timing shall be modified to reduce expected traffic queues as part of a larger corridor re-timing effort to be conducted by the city. Two, the applicant shall convert the Meadowland Park Boulevard/Sam's Club West driveway intersection to three-way stop operations, allowing inbound traffic from Lakeland Highlands Road to not stop at this location. An intersection signage and striping plan shall be included with the site plan submittal for approval by city staff as part of the right-of-way use permitting process. An M, bicycle parking shall be provided within 40 feet of and shall be visible from the principal customer entrance in compliance with Section 4.11.6 of the Land Development Code and Index 900. Code and Index 900 of the City Engineering Standards Manual. And we do recommend approval of this. Like I said, we've heard nothing from our notifications, but I'll stand for any questions. I'm sure Chuck's available with questions, too, if you have any.
Any questions?
Got one question. The adjacent property, you said we're putting a restriction on another high-turnover, fast-food, is that correct?
Well, we're, we're saying that we're only allowing Lot Two with this modification. If somebody else wants to come in for a very-high-turnover restaurant, they would have to go through this process again. So it is possible that somebody could come through with one.
Do you know if that parcel is in the same ownership or not?
The one to the south? I believe it's owned by Sam's Club Inc. as well. We actually do have a concept plan that, that came in last, I shouldn't say came in. It went before our development review team last Wednesday to do another quick-service-type restaurant on that parcel to the south. Right here. So that may be coming for, before you within the next couple of months. I guess depending on if they can make their major traffic numbers work.
And then, there's no cross-access between these parcels or need for that?
Between the two, no, we have not, we do not request any cross-access. This, the Sam's Club Drive.
Yeah, provides.
It, it provides enough access.
And, and that was, that was a comment that did come up for the other property as part of our content review last week, and I think the challenge is, is being able to meet the minimum parking requirements for either use. They really need as much area as possible, you know, and, and yeah, that, that cross-access and along the backside, you know, would, would serve that purpose.
Any other questions? So you're asking the board to approve staff recommendation?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we approve this with the staff recommendations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Prove.
Thank you.
Item seven. Plaid approval for the villages at Bridgewater Village 14 on 20.11 acres, generally located north of Bridgewater Lakes Way, south and east of Interstate Four, and northwest of Great Bear Drive. Owner, HDP Bridgewater LLC, applicant Doug Forney, Chastain Skilman, Inc.
And I need to recuse on this project, I worked on it.
Good morning again. For the record, Joshua Cheney with Community Economic Development. Chastain Skilman Incorporated, on behalf of HDP Bridgewater LLC, has submitted a subdivision plat for Village 14 of the villages at Bridgewater subdivision. The proposed plat consists of ninety-nine lots on approximately 20.11 acres. This is generally located north of Bridgewater Lakes Way, south and east of Interstate Four, and northwest of Great Bear Drive. Plats are reviewed by the city subdivision review team, and this is in compliance with Article Nine of our Land Development Code. Those are our subdivision standards, and staff is recommending approval to you. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Any comments? I have a motion to approve the staff request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove. Motion passed.
Report of City Commission action on planning and zoning board recommendations along with Business Development and Transportation Manager's report.
Thank you very much. And kicking things off, what I would like to do at this point, and this is following up on the board's discussion last month about school concurrency, I'd like to introduce Joshua Mclemore. He is with the Polk County School District and is our new point of contact relative to school concurrency determinations for residential development. And so, Joshua, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of providing a little bit of background on the school concurrency process and answering any questions that the, that the PNC board has would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Barnby. And again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity. So in terms of concurrency and how that breaks down, there are state-mendated, there's a ratio in place that gives us a mathematical equation that allows us to estimate how many students would be generated per single-family detached homes versus multifamily. Where concurrency comes into play is, is when units, they have achieved their conceptual approvals, and now they're moving on to more level-two site-engineered binding plans. As a part of that review process, and as established between the school boards in a local agreement and the City of Lakeland, the applicants and/or the developer have to apply for concurrency directly to the school board. Now, what all that really means is, where are these students going to be attending? Now, with that, we have to take into account, what is the current attendance for all the schools' impact to both elementary, middle, and high school? And then also look at, what are the vested developments that are in the adjacent and the surrounding areas? Because we can't just look at what is today, but what is coming into the future, what has been vested already? And how will that play into what is being proposed today? So given all of that, we look first, obviously, within the zoned attendance boundary for the school. If there is capacity there, we'd like to just keep the community as a whole within that one boundary. However, that is not necessarily an option. So other tools that we look at is what we look at in what we call adjacency. What are the adjacent capacities for the nearby schools? And by adjacency, we mean it has to actually touch the boundary of the zoned school property or for the boundary itself. So it's not like we're jumping multiple school boundaries when we're looking at adjacency for schools. So another option that we have to take into consideration are, what are some upcoming improvements or projects that would add capacity to these schools? If they're coming online within the next five years, and we have a firm idea, okay, we know this elementary school is gonna have an addition, that's gonna generate at least two-hundred additional seats. So we can go ahead and start counting those seats within the three to five years when we anticipate that school to come online. So with that, any other questions?
Where are the, I guess, tightest numbers right now, or areas that you guys are focused on?
That would be the northeast of part of the county, most definitely. But within the purview of the City of Lakeland, we are in the process of adding additional capacity at Southwest Middle. That project should be around the 2024, 2025 timeline. However, that middle school, as it stands right now, they're, they're sitting comfortable at available capacity as it exists today. But again, we're trying to look forward, plan ahead for the upcoming growth that we're foreseeing.
We're, we're seeing a lot of development along Pipkin Road, around the airport. How are the schools in that area as those projects?
And so, right now, they're sitting roughly at around the eighty percent capacity range. And what's interesting and rather unique with the City of Lakeland is that there are so many elementary schools within this area. So you, that eighty percent spread across multiple elementary schools does provide capacity for, for the immediate area. So with that, right now, like I said, they're sitting around eighty percent.
But will that area that she just mentioned be zoned in just one school district, or will it be spread out with the additional people over several areas?
There are, let me break up my map, but I would want to say there, with how the attendance boundaries are drawn today, that probably spans across at least five elementary schools. And that is one directive that the superintendent has placed on myself and our department to look as another possible tool to help with the capacity of each school. Let's start taking a look at our attendance boundaries and see if they actually make sense in terms of, based off the last 2020 census data, what do the numbers show us? How does that attendance boundary look on the ground today? And try to minimize any outlying, almost like spot zoning zones for attendance, so to speak, unless there's another driving factor behind it. So try to get it more compact, not less, don't allow attendance boundary to jet off to one direction or the other. Try to keep them compact as possible.
I have one more question. You said that you kind of start getting things more, like, pinpointed once the next review after it comes to this board. Are you aware, like, when projects come before this board, like, kind of what they're asking for, and do you keep track of what gets approved in the units and that sort of thing, or do you just wait for the next step in the process?
Typically, so we have, there are two methods in place. One, the applicants, if they want to get an initial idea of what, what the capacity is within the area, they can apply for what we call is a non-binding determination letter. And really, all that tells them is, this is the, these are the schools that you were zoned for, and this is their current capacity. Now, as a part of our open communication with all the municipalities and the, and the county, we share agendas as far as, hey, this is what's up and coming. We also have planner working groups. We exchange information in terms of, hey, these are the developments that we see on the horizon. So we, we do get tied in in that way.
Great, thank you.
And if I could jump in as well, in terms of the city's concurrency review process, you know, we look at the traditional transportation, water, wastewater capacity, solid waste, but we also look at concurrent, uh, schools as well. And so what we do is, is part of a site plan approval for multifamily and for plat approval for single-family detached, we also provide the concurrency certificates to the school district along with the units when they were approved. We include the finding of adequate capacity that was included at the time of zoning, as well as any updated information to be able to show the documentation that, you know, this is the same project that had been reviewed previously. And so we make sure we, and in fact, we, about October or so of last year, provided information to the school district to update the data that they had available for all the developments in the Lakeland area. The other thing that we, it's probably important to note, too, is that through the in a local agreement that we have with the, with the school district, developments of regional impact that were in place prior to, I think it was March 1st of 2008, are exempt from school concurrency determinations. Even though that's the case, we still provide that information to the school district because it doesn't matter if it's exempt from review or not, it's still students that are being added to, you know, that need seats. And so we provide that information as well. So if it's Oakbridge, which is an existing DRI, or Bridgewater, which is a former DRI, we provide that information to make sure that we continue to get the latest, greatest to them for their school planning activities. And so Southwest Lakeland has been an area that's been a big concern, as well as Northeast Lakeland around Bridgewater, up, you know, the Williams development originally impacted and moving up the 33 corridor. So those are definitely areas that we, we're keeping an eye on as well.
Let me ask you a quick question. Has, have your estimates been impacted by a couple of, I know I've sat on this half-cent sales tax oversight committee. There's a lot of construction going on all over the area. I'm sure the school board and the, and the school system is not exempt from the same problem everybody else is having as far as supplies, getting work done. Add in the problem of teacher shortages. How does that impact your estimates regarding new developments? And the ability to handle them?
It, with the, with the addition of the half-cent sales tax, that is a great benefit and a tool for the school. But as many of the other developers are seeing, too, the cost, building costs that we're now seeing are, they're exponential. Typically, we would, when we were looking at adding a capacity or project or even a new school, at some point, prior to, we were love being able to lock in contracts at a guaranteed rate, so a cost estimate for a cost of construction or a guarantee, GPM, guaranteed price for that project would be valid anywhere between three to four months. Now, we're getting thirty days, just because of how volatile the market is right now.
Do you have any new schools planned within the Lakeland area over the next five years?
Not within the next five years, however, we are currently drafting our next, our next year to add on to our five-year plan right now. So we are gonna be working really close in hand with the city staff in terms of looking at what the future population growth looks like for the area, and see if we don't need to go ahead and start looking ahead and possibly identifying future sites. And just one other aspect, not to muddy the water even more, when we're looking at school capacity, or school capacity determinations, when units come online, so Polk County students have what, parents have the option of choice. So just because they're zoned for a certain school, they may go charter, they may decide to go to a private school. So we do our best to help forecast, if we have two-hundred units coming online for the subdivision, we can give an estimate on how many students that subdivision will generate. But again, that is a estimate. That is not taking into account the choices that parents may elect in order to send their students, or send their children to a different school, uh, school, or like I said, go to a charter school. So it is a projection.
I just wanted to make one comment. I want to applaud your proactive stance on this. Governments usually are reactive as opposed to proactive. And this is an ongoing question that we get asked with these big developments. And I think it's important that people understand that you're not standing waiting for something bad to happen. You guys are ahead of the whole game, and that if you say there's room in these schools, we can trust that there's room in these schools for all these children that are coming on.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming.
Just in, in terms of additional updates, next month, you, you'll be seeing a modification to the conditional use permit for the Geneva Academy for an outdoor pavilion on the north side of the campus, and so that'll be coming forward. You'll be seeing a planned unit development major modification request for what we call Track E within Morgan Creek Preserve on the north side of Morgan Creek, came through the process about a year ago. This time, the unit count is for ninety single-family units. So that's, that'll be coming forward. We have a request for a racetrack, convenience store, or fueling station at Step Road 33 and Tom Cow Road, north of I-4. So that will require a PUD and, of course, review consistent with the green swamp policies and Land Development Code. And then we have another multifamily development that will be coming in for a PUD modification on South Parkway Furniture Road, immediately east of Lockheed Martin's office building there, east of the Oakbridge DRI. So those are some coming attractions that we'll be seeing next month. In terms of actions by the city commission, those are included in your packet. The Lake Mary Square Apartments, the applicant has requested a continuance to the April Fourth meeting, and so that will be discussed on, on Monday as well. But everything else is tracking, tracking forward based on the, the approvals granted last month.
Anything else? Any other comments? Any other questions? Very adjourned.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am.